Call order, regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, Monday, January 13th, 2020, at six o'clock. And as always, we'll start off with a hand扶ation. It's Commissioner Walker's turn. And Commissioner Walker, I ask you, if you wouldn't mind, to please remember Sergeant Bobby Lincolnship and his family.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Walker. That's great. Dear Lord, our county people, Father, we come before you this evening, asking for your presence and your guidance, as we meet to do the county's business. We thank you, as a board, as members of this board, that people put their trust and confidence in us to make the decisions that keep moving our county forward and best serve you. We ask that you be with the family of the person we lost from our community. We thank you for his years of service that he gave, and for the person he was, and we know he'll be missed. And we just ask that you be with his family in a special way. Let them feel your love and your presence and your guidance during their time of need. We thank you for these people who have taken their time to come to this meeting this evening, to be here, to express their thoughts, and by their presence, show support for something that's important in our country, our Constitution. And we thank you, Lord, that we have things like our Constitution and other important items to guide us and hopefully keep us on track, keep us more where you'd have us to be. We thank you for our blessings. We thank you again for all that you do for us, and ask all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Please continue standing for pleasure, ladies. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united on, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, go ahead and get approval for the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then move on to our comments from our Commissioners and the manager, and I'll talk to Commissioner Morse.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You guys hear me in the back?
Yeah. If y'all speak a little bit louder for us, y'all, we appreciate it.
Yeah, raise your hand if you can hear us, okay? Well, give me a chance to talk first. Great to see everybody out here tonight. You know, a lot of us like college football, but the Second Amendment's a lot more important than that, and I'm glad you guys all agree with me on that. That's why you're here. Like I said, welcome. It's great to see so many people. This is the biggest meeting, I think, Commissioner meeting, I've ever been to, I think. If there was a bigger one, I don't remember when it was. I want to remind everybody that I have my regular office hours up at the Administration Building tomorrow night from four to seven, so if you'd like to meet or give me a call during that timeframe, feel free to do so. I'm also, I'll be blogging this meeting like I do all the meetings. I'll probably try to have it up by sometime Wednesday, hopefully. I like to include everybody's public comments in my blog if they're, if they send them to me. I'm not sure I can do that with this bigger crowd, but I'll at least summarize them and give it my best shot. So if you, if you do have some comments you'd like me to include, send them to my banjo email address, and I'll try to get them to the blog. And with that, thanks again for showing up tonight. Look forward to hearing from you folks, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Walker?
Thank you, sir. Maybe if I stand up, you might be able to hear me just a little bit better.
Yeah.
Okay, and I have to say, I don't think my voice is as strong as it used to be. Maybe I've used it too much. But anyhow, good to see all of you here. Even if we weren't meeting here this evening with the Second Amendment support on our ballot, I still think we are a Second Amendment, a Second Amendment county, a strong Second Amendment county.
Amen.
Even though we want to send a message to other counties that we publicly support the Second Amendment, I think all you have to do is talk to people in Stokes County. You won't have to go very far before you found out, this is a Second Amendment county, and I strongly support not only the Second Amendment, but so much of our Constitution that gives us the rights and privileges we have. And it's very disturbing to me to see these rights and privileges, a lot of them are very important, to see them being challenged the way they are, in ways they shouldn't be. But thank you for being here. God, what a nice crowd. You're right, this is one of the biggest crowds, I think, we've had. I bet we're over two hundred. But anyhow, I'll stop there, and I know our other Commissioners have things they want to say and share. But thanks again for being here, and I hope you find that your time has been well spent, and you feel good about being involved. It's always good, I think, for citizens to be involved with their governmental processes, to participate, to let it be known what you support, let it be known what you think could be better, and one way of doing it is doing the way you folks are here this evening, by showing up when you need to. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Yance?
Thank you, Mr. Nicholson. Can everyone hear me? So I'll keep this very brief in the importance of time tonight. I know there, we have a lot of people here to speak. It's great to see a room full of Constitutionalists here tonight. I applaud everyone for coming out. Just want to say one thing, when I took this office, I took an oath to stand behind the Constitution, and not only the Second Amendment, but every amendment that's on it, and tonight I look forward to reaffirming that. So thank you all for coming out.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Minnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I want to thank everyone here tonight. What a tremendous turnout. This is great. And as Commissioner Yance said, back when I was elected in 2016, when President Trump was elected, you know, I took an oath also. That election was on November 8th, 2016. It seemed like it was just yesterday, but it's been almost four years, and we're getting ready to go into another election. And I want to say to everyone here, thank you for coming out. The Constitution of the United States of America, that was the oath I took and swore to uphold and support and make sure, and I hope everyone here is feeling the same way. And I want to thank you all for coming out, and I'm not going to take too much time. I'll talk a little more in a few minutes, but I know we've got a lot of people that wants to speak, so I'm going to cut it short tonight. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I just got to say, this is a humbling experience. When I look in this room here tonight, I see all y'all here, this goes to show Stokes County has a voice. This tells our government that, hey, we matter too. And I want to appreciate each and every one of y'all for being here and not in support of that. Thank you. And just to let you know, we have no lights tonight, so we will shut it as loud as we can. We have different things set up in the Commissioners' chambers. Right now, I do want to ask any department head who has got to speak tonight, if they wouldn't mind to come up here on this front pew and sit. Is there any department heads that's got to speak tonight? Thank you. With that, I'll pass it on to our county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and folks, it's an honor to see you, and just one, perhaps come out that is concerned about our Second Amendment, and together, you stand strong together, always. I want my condolences go to the Sheriff's Department and the loss we had of Lincolnship. My prayers go to his family. And Commissioners, don't forget, the League of Government is coming Thursday, the location has been changed, so it's going to be at the Library instead of the Senior Center for Walco, where Walco serves. This is a League of Government meeting that we have with our municipalities every quarter to try to go over things that is in the interest of the local government. But anyway, thank you so much, it's great to see you. God bless the United States, God bless Stokes County.
All right, with that, we'll move on to our public comments. This was a sheet that was at the door as y'all walked in. If you put your name down, I'll call you up to speak. If you didn't mean to, when I call your name, just say you didn't mean to, and we'll just move on. We usually give it thirty minutes, max, at each meeting. We'll see how long this goes, so if you don't mind, try to keep it as close as you can to, at that three minute or a little bit less, give everybody a chance to talk. We'll go ahead and start off with Sheriff Martin Marshall.
Thank you all for having me tonight. I just wanted to express my support for the Second Amendment, the resolution that y'all were considering tonight, and it's glad to hear y'all standing behind us, well. But, you need me to give my address, but?
No, I took that. I know where you're at.
But this is something that's important to all of us, the biggest thing is keeping everybody's infringing of our rights and whatnot, and not only with the Second Amendment, you know, all amendments that get you, but playing the part of watching everything. But I do support this resolution, y'all, with that, and I hope y'all do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Up next, we have Mr. Amos Elvis.
Good evening, Commissioners. I appreciate from the bottom of my heart that you let me come and speak tonight about our Second Amendment. And thank you, ladies and gentlemen at the gallery, that are here tonight, standing up for your Second Amendment. My name's Amos Elvis, I'm from the Chestnut Road Community, King, and I'll keep this short so others can speak, because I don't want anybody to read that out. I want to thank you so much for putting this constitutional Second Amendment rights protection resolution, it is not a sanctuary county, but we don't want that, on the discussion agenda tonight. And I'm looking forward to this being moved to the action tonight, and a unanimous vote from all five of the groups to pass or adopt it. And just remember, this is not for a sanctuary county. A lot of counties in Virginia are calling it a sanctuary county, that they've got up there, and I don't want to misconstrue that. But I would like to say, I've got two or three hundred names on petitions out here. I don't know if any of all of these people probably did sign it, but I want to thank all the citizens of Stokes County for standing up for their Second Amendment rights, and for the rest of my time after them. Thank you, Minnell.
And what I'll do, I want to go ahead and call the next person, and after each one, I'll call the person after it, so if you want to make your way forward, go ahead and sit down and wait for your turn to speak. Up next, we have Ms. Sonia Cox. After her, we have Mr. Andy Stevens.
My address is 5645 Highway 66 in King, North Carolina. Chairman Nickelston and members of the board, it's a privilege to be able to speak to you tonight. I thank you for this opportunity to speak. I wrote down my comments in the interest of time, and I'll provide you with a copy of them when I'm done. Some are saying that civil war is coming to the state of Virginia. The truth is, it's already there. A war of sorts was declared when Governor Norton introduced his unconstitutional gun bills and backed up other legislators as they introduced more restrictive and needless gun control bills. Although no actual shots have been fired, war has been declared in Virginia's state to defend this garage on its Second Amendment rights. It's time for the counties of North Carolina to send a message that this will not be tolerated here. As the mainstream media tries to turn our attention away from the dastardly deeds perpetuated upon the citizens of Virginia, whether it be by a false narrative of impeachment, or whatever the daily dose of fake news is, it is imperative that we, as a county, and as a state, stay focused, stay woke, and stay vigilant. For we know how high the price of freedom is, we are cognizant of the fact that far too many have paid the ultimate price for our freedom, so it is for them today that we stand. What was relevant and right in 1791, when the Bill of Rights was ratified by Congress, is still appropriate and applicable today. We must maintain the right and ability to overthrow a tyrannical government if necessary, the right to protect ourselves, our property, our loved ones. Even common sense things like the right to have practice firing ranges, hunting dogs, and even self-defense classes, those are the things that are under attack in Virginia. This constitutional rights protection resolution to be introduced tonight, in my opinion, is the first step that we, as a county, can take to protect our rights. This resolution sends a clear message to our legislators and Congress that we, the people of Stokes County, will not stand idly by and watch our rights be eroded and our republic fall, while extreme gun control advocates try to use a false narrative of saving lives or reducing crimes as a means to restrict our rights as law-abiding gun owners. I implore each of you, to, each of us in this room, to contact our state legislators today and clearly and loudly let our voices be heard, to voice the collective review of any red flag laws, magazine capacity limits, which, in my opinion, are a slippery slope to the end of the rights of law-abiding citizens to bear arms. To vote against any and all gun control legislation that might be proposed. I respectfully ask our Commissioners to move this item to action tonight. I believe it to be an item of utmost importance. It will guard the rights of the citizens of Stokes County. I would also like to encourage our Commissioners to explore the possibility of taking this a step further than a resolution, to check into the legalities of a possible ordinance that will go further to protect the government from infringing on the rights of legal gun owners in Stokes County. We should not have to ask permission for what is already protected, given to us by the Second Amendment of the Constitution of the United States. I will close with this thought, it's a quote by 16th President of the United States, Abraham Lincoln. "We, the people, are the rightful masters of both Congress and the courts, not to overthrow the Constitution, but to overthrow the men who would pervert the Constitution." Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
After Mr. Stevens, we have Ms. Ellen Perry.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioners, staff, and visitors. My name is Andy Stevens, and I reside at 157 Old Darnard Drive outside King in Stokes County. I represent grassroots North Carolina and gun owners of America, where I hold leadership roles in both. I am here tonight because of the unwarranted, unnecessary, and unprecedented assault on our constitutional right to keep and bear arms that is now aggressively taking place across our land. Today, our friends in neighboring Virginia have the real potential of being made felony criminals overnight by the simple virtue of possessing a modern sporting rifle, or a piece of plastic enclosing a follower and a spring. Gun-free zones are not crazy enough there. Some are proposing bullet-free zones. Yes, really, they are. Tonight, this board has scheduled discussion for a Second Amendment resolution. I wholeheartedly encourage you to not only discuss this matter, but affirm Stokes County intent to protect the Second Amendment for all Stokes County citizens with a unanimous vote of support. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, for placing this on our agenda tonight. Why might this be necessary? Well, let's consider some history here in Stokes County. Years ago, the city of King proclaimed a state of emergency and declared during that time, the possession of firearms to be a criminal offense. Grassroots North Carolina was forced to sue the city to make them comply with state statute and allow lawful future possession during such times. Now, the past is the past, but tonight, I call upon officials in King, Stokes County's largest municipality and possessor of its own police force, to clearly demonstrate this break with the past and prepare and endorse its own Second Amendment protection resolution. If not for state preemptive statutes, our very meeting here tonight in the town of Danbury might resemble the newly enacted gun-free zone Democrats in Virginia just imposed around their capital enrichment. For you see, we have our own Michael Bloomberg gun control supporters in our midst, even here in the county seat of Stokes. Tonight, I also call upon the town council of Danbury to repeal the draconian ordinance outlawing the use of firearms on personal property within town limits. An ordinance Virginia Governor Blackface Northam would be proud to call his own. In the meantime, I ask our sheriff not to waste the valuable time of deputies chasing down the sounds of freedom in and around Danbury in support of this unjust ordinance prohibiting training and proficiency. After all, the need and value of such activity became clear recently at a church in Texas, where no less than seven armed citizens were prepared to deal with the deranged psychopath intent on causing carnage, death, and destruction. While the average response time to a 911 call is approximately eleven minutes, this deranged killer was stopped by good guys with guns in a matter of six seconds. No collateral injuries or deaths were caused by the citizens who responded with deadly force, and no individuals involved in the incident were subsequently mistaken for suspect by law enforcement once they arrived on the scene. Training does pay off. Millions of North Carolinians possess firearms, and citizens possessing valid concealed carry permits in our state now approaches 700,000. Stokes County, as our sheriff can tell you, has more than its fair share of both. We, the citizens of Stokes County, exercise support and defend our constitutional rights. So tonight, to make, tonight, debate this matter, move it to the action agenda, and unanimously proclaim our Stokes County a Second Amendment constitutional rights protection county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ellen, I'm sorry. After Ellen, we have, it's either Roy or Ray Goleman.
If you may ask.
Okay, thank you, sir.
It pretty much did well.
Okay. Robert Everts. Okay.
Ellen Perry, 1095 Wheeler Smith Road, Lawsonville, North Carolina. I'm here to give you an update on the arts. In the Apple Gallery this month of January, we have a presentation called Ever Changing Seasons. It's a collaborative show of paintings, photography, sculpture, and mixed media by ten local artists. Drop by to view or purchase the original piece of art. It's going to be on display through January, and our opening reception was Friday, January 10th. Stokes County is going to be hosting the Poetry Out Loud District Competition. That's January 18th, Saturday, 11:00 a.m. Poetry Out Loud is a national arts education program that encourages the study of great poetry by offering free educational materials and a dynamic recitation competition to high schools across the country. This program helps students master public speaking skills, build self-confidence, and learn about literary history and contemporary life. Poetry Out Loud is a partnership of the National Endowment for the Arts, Poetry Foundation, and the state and jurisdictional arts agencies. This year, we've got students from South Stokes and West Stokes High participating, and the event is free and open to the public. Our Winter Dessert Theater starts January 25th, Saturday at 3:00 p.m. Jason Petty brings Hank Williams music and story alive in this one-man show. The Lawson Tour tells the story of one of country music's greatest legends with wit, wisdom, and reflective humor. All of the legendary songs are included, such as John Malaya, You're Cheating Hard, Hey, Good Lookin', and Move It On Over, and many more. Saturday, January 25th, 3:00 p.m. Dessert service at all our winter dessert theaters, those are all sponsored. It's sponsored this month by Robertson Homes Inspections, and the dessert service starts at 2:00 p.m. There's also four shows in the Winter Dessert Theater series, so you can get a ticket to all four at a discount. Just to recap, our polar plunge on New Year's Day was kind of bombing, so we had a big turnout, about seventy-five people plunging, and probably about a hundred to two hundred viewing. So the proceeds from that benefit arts programs in the park. The Arts Place just finished another great year. We had sales for 2019 of 71,000. We were up fifteen percent over last year. We paid out to artists 46,500 and paid in sales tax 4,500. We sold 6,534 items in 3,000, over 3,000 transactions. So thank you for your support of the Arts Place and the parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Robert Everts. After that, we have Larry Barger.
My name is Robert Everts, 1045 Sandy Joe Lane, King, North Carolina. I love this idea that we're going to come and bring this before the Commission today and try to get this passed, okay? My question for you guys and everybody in this room, this man right here is backing, he's sticking his neck out on the line. What are we, as a commission, as a county, going to do if the government comes for him? We just passed voter ID law three years ago, and all of a sudden, a Judge Sungler says, you know what, no, that's not right. What are we going to do if they come after him? Before long, there'll be a sheriff that gets elected who says, you know what, I'm not going to jail for this. I'm not going to jail for any of this. Y'all run your own. We've got a man right here who's going to stand up for us. What are we, as a county, as a commission, going to do about it? That's my whole issue with this thing. That's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Up next, we have Mr. Buddy Tm.
Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate this opportunity to speak on the Second Amendment. Like I said, my name's Larry Barger, and I live at 1459 Bradley Grove, Nick, in North Carolina. And first of all, I want to say I'm a Christian, I'm a husband, I'm a father of five girls, and I'm a veteran. And this is very important, very important, Chairman. I want to point out two words in our Constitution, or Constitution of Bill of Rights, inalienable. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their creators with certain inalienable rights. I looked up that word, inalienable. It says it cannot be taken away or denied. Now, I'll look over there, Second Amendment, over there. It says, point out that word, infringement. A well-regulated militia, being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and to bear arms, shall not be infringed. Now, point, point that word out, infringed. Act as, act so as, to limit or undermine or encroach upon. Two very important words with this Second Amendment, and you know, we have stealth judges working with stealth politicians. That's our problem. Our liberal friends would have us to believe that they don't want us, they don't want to take our guns, but we see the difference in a neighboring, a neighboring state. And you know, these gun-free zones where most people, this is where most shootings take place. It's supposed to be the safest place, but it's not. It's not. The crime rate, look at Chicago, the crime rates in the gun-free zone, it's the murder capital, I believe, of our whole nation. Like I said, gun ownership is a deterrent to crime. Some have said it's safer to be in Afghanistan than it is to live, live in some of the states here, say, Chicago. Safer, safer to be in Afghanistan. That's very sad, very sad. And, and gun-free, as I said, gun-free, most, most of these things happen in these gun-free zones. I was thinking, I'm going to say something about the sheriff. You know, I appreciate the sheriff, I really do. I appreciate our guys, and, but you know what? If I needed them, you know how long it takes for them to get there? We've got a big county, we've got limited resources. I wish we could give them all the rates, I really do, all them deputies. I've heard what a deputy gets paid, I couldn't believe it one time, and for what they do for us as, as, as a citizens. But I appreciate you, Mike Marshall, I appreciate you, and, and doing what y'all do. But you know what? Am I going to wait that thirty minutes, to wait on the sheriff to, to come and assist me when I got paid? Those five daughters on the line? No, no, I don't think so. I'm not giving up my guns. I'm not giving up. So I'm going to go, point out a little bit of history here, Washington, crossing the Delaware. You know, he told those men, he said, he said, they owe you for eternity, and we do. From seven, I think that was Christmas, what, 1775? I think it was. He said, they owe you for eternity. And I believe he had, from what history tells me, he had about 2,500 men, and they tell me that one- And, you know, it was important enough for them not even to have shoes to cross that and get the equipment there. Some had burlap on their feet, from what I read, it tells me. And so, and it was, they did all that to combat tyranny and dictatorship. And God forbid if we don't stand up and fight the tyranny and the dictatorship that wants to go on in some of our places. And I'm glad that Stokes County is one that stands on the Second Amendment, but we have to fight, we have to fight people. And I want to end with one quote. It says, "These are times that triumph in souls." And I beg you, Commissioners, to adopt this resolution tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
After Mr. Tim, we have Michael May.
Good evening. I'm DA Buddy Tim, P.O. Box five seven three, Waldman Cove. I am for accepting a declaration declaring Stokes County a Second Amendment constitutional rights protection county. I have no faith that our Democrat elected officials will uphold the Constitution, especially the Second Amendment's right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. They speak up for more gun control and even confiscation every chance they get. They need to be warned, there's a hot place in hell forever for those that violate their oaths. The eternal judge over all the earth, our Creator, has spoken, "Thou shall not bear false witness," as it is twenty sixteen. "And all liars shall have their pardon in a lake which burns with fire," Revelations twenty-one eighty. I am fed up with the weakness and silence of the naysayers that we can do nothing to stop degeneracy, totalitarianism, and outright lies from politicians. I lived just south of Miami and commuted to Miami when the Liberty City riots were going on. Hourly, the police chief announced on the radio, "The police can do no longer protect you. Get a gun and protect yourself." When I, a Vietnam vet, spoke with a Vietnamese officer who had escaped to the United States, he told me, "If you sign an agreement to help us, don't betray us." I agreed, our government did wrong. Besides, our word should have been trustworthy enough. I have family and friends that lived in other countries, that had their countries taken over by communists pretending to be for the people. Sadly, when guns are in the hands of the government alone, the people are at the mercy of communist principled thugs and suffer hardships, if not death. Whatever happened to, quote, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their creator with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness; that to secure these rights governments are instituted among men. To secure the right to life, the right to keep and bear arms, should be protected from infringement." You have taken an oath to the Constitution, and so have I. Almighty God will hold this accountable.
Michael May, still here?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Ray Allen Henson?
Yes, sir.
Appreciate the opportunity to speak. First of all, I'm here to uphold the Second Amendment. I come from a military family, and I am a veteran myself. Any individual, and I know there are a lot of veterans here that have been in another country, they see how Americans are treated, and the Second Amendment should be strong. And the reason for that is that if these individuals will look and investigate, and take it on my word, what happens to countries, townships, communities where the government comes in and takes the individual's rights to protect themselves, they no longer become individuals, they're owned by the government. And I do not agree with that. I swore an oath to protect and serve, and I plan on continuing to do so. And I hope and pray that Stokes County will uphold the Second Amendment as well. And Ms. Leonard does not wish to speak.
Thank you. I apologize that there's a lot of writing over top on each other's names. Arthur Cottle.
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Janice Ashburn. We're down to our last six minutes of this, so do it like this. All of us, it's important of our Second Amendment resolution, raise your hand. Is there anybody here that would like to speak who's against it? Come forward, please.
I will say, I was about to get Sheriff Marshall to bring you up here. I was a little afraid before you came over from the back, I feel like that.
Is there anybody else who signed up who really wants to speak?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, come forward.
Thank you very much. My name is Ralph Walters, and I'm a candidate for District Ten. I'm running to be your U.S. Representative in Congress. And I remember as a boy, when I was growing up, my dad would take me hunting, and it was a thrill for me to clean his gun. And I remember just looking down that barrel and getting all the shot out of it, pouching it up. He was so proud of me, you know, and I felt so good when I finished the job. And nowhere, at any time, when I was about eight or nine years old, I owned a four-ten shotgun. It was really a cool gun. It was black, with black stock and chrome. And at no time did I ever think that that gun was dangerous to another human being. I was raised to believe that gun was simply for hunting and protection, but at no time in my boy's mind did I ever think it would be used to kill somebody. And as everybody's pointed out, when you live in a rural area, the response time is a lot longer. And I'm reminded of when I was the newspaper editor of the Reevesville Review and the Eden Daily News and the Madison Messenger around two thousand three, two thousand four. And I remember the Short murders, just on the other side of the state line. Martin Short and his entire family and his daughter, they were killed. His daughter was kidnapped, and they found her bones in Rockham County. I'll never forget that. That family whore, that nightmare, still haunts me today. It's an unsolved case. Had they had a weapon, who knows what actually happened? But if they had the opportunity to defend themselves, if Mr. Short had had that opportunity, he might be alive today along with his daughter and his wife. And so, if I'm elected to Congress, I support the Second Amendment. The Second Amendment is in place to protect the First Amendment and all of our other amendments. And without it, we're helpless. And if there's any warning that we need to see, that we need to see anymore about the rogue Democrat house that we have, I mean, God help us, if they actually got control of the presidency, the Senate, and the House, who knows what had happened? We're just getting a little taste of, they're power crazy, they've got some kind of Trump syndrome, and this is our only defense. So, I support this resolution, and I hope that you will support these folks and protect and make this county a sanctuary county in defense of the Second Amendment. Thank you.
I believe I've seen one more hand back there. The first gentleman standing up right there, if you don't mind, please come forward. That's all I had time for tonight. I want to thank each and every one of y'all who did sign up to speak. We appreciate you, listening to your voice, being heard. We do have another Commissioners' Meeting on the twenty-seventh, which is two more weeks from today, back up in the County Commissioners' Chambers up here on top of the hill. If you'd like to come in and speak, please do. Go ahead, sir.
My name's Rick Carrington. I live on Wells Creek Road. I've been a resident of this county for two years now. I've owned property up here for several years. My heart became a resident of this county when I was two years old. My uncle was from there. Whether y'all know it or not, this is probably a county that this entire nation could learn some valuable lessons from. I live next door to someone who is high up in the Democratic Party in this county. We're neighbors. We like each other, we appreciate each other. He's not here tonight to set me for cause of respect and not want to cause any problems. Wisdom, great wisdom. He comes to our range all the time and shoots and enjoys it. He knows the importance of the Second Amendment. That's what I love about this county, and every day that goes by, I love it more and more. The people here are outstanding. They have common sense, they have common respect, and they have a compassion that you don't see anywhere else in this nation. I've lived in several states, I've lived in several different cities, most recently in Forsyth. And I'm here to tell you, y'all thank God every day for this county and the people in it and the people that represent us here. We thank y'all for what you're doing, and we know you're going to do the right thing tonight and let this county stand with other counties in North Carolina and send a message to Washington, D.C. and other areas that we shall not have our Second Amendment rights for any other rights. Thank y'all, God bless you, and I'd like to thank Mike Marshall for what he does and his people, sorry to hear about the loss of one of yours today.
Thank you.
We appreciate you, and we appreciate y'all. Thank you very much.
All right with it? Go on. Go ahead and move on now to the consign agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
It's a move.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we move on to our information agenda now, and it's the jail inspection report. Captain Eric.
Good evening. Just make this short and sweet here, and most of you probably have your inspection in front of you. Yes, we've got a good clean bill of health there, other than a few maintenance issues that have to be resolved. Those were submitted to the maintenance department, those have been corrected. That report's been sent to the state with our corrections, and they have sent the letter back confirming that and are happy with how things are going in Stokes County.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
I just want to say thank you for all you worked together.
I put on the backs of the employees. They're the ones that make it happen over there.
Thank you, Captain. Item B, register deeds update. Mr. Brandon Hooker.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. I've got two pages, I'm going to reduce, make it down to about half a page here. You can see the financial figures, I know you've got it in front of you there, Commissioners, for the last, the second quarter of the fiscal year twenty nineteen to twenty. You see our total revenue there, one hundred sixteen thousand, one hundred fifty-four dollars and forty cents. And the state monies collected, thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars and twenty cents for net revenue, seventy-six thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty cents. This is a dot average from the last quarter. We are ahead of where we were this time last year. That's the financial. About the office, there's two new programs going to be implemented this month. The first one will be an online program for ordering birth certificates, death certificates, and marriage license copies of those each. This is going to be a step toward modernizing the office and be a major convenience to the customers. This is being offered by Courthouse Computer Systems at no charge to the county. It'll be a three and a half dollar convenience fee passed along to the customer by third-party venue for site maintenance. The second initiative is called Property Notification. It's being implemented by our principal, Vander Logan Systems, and it's going to be great benefit to the county. The citizens can create an account with their website, and they'll be notified by email anytime any documents filed in our office with their name on it. This will go to great lengths of reducing any kind of fraud that people may be trying to perpetrate on these citizens. There was a story, we'll sort with it, a highway patrolman had issued a ticket, and I don't know if this was in this state or another, it was given to me by another register here in this state. He gave me a ticket to someone. Two years later, he and his wife are about to close on their house, and a title search revealed a half million dollar lien against the property. The vendor had placed a lien on the property because he knew the truth promoted it. And if the property owner had some kind of notification that this was being done in his name, he would have called the authorities and could have got this taken care of. This property notification program being offered is an extra layer of security to the documents in our office. The best part about this service also is that it's being offered free of charge by Logan Systems. It imposes no cost to the county for implementation, nor is it imposing a cost on the citizens to register an account. I should stress that most transactions in the office, ninety-nine percent or so, are perfectly legitimate, and we're not anticipating any, but this is a precautionary tool to better live our office, to protect the integrity of the records for which we are responsible. We're excited about this process, looking forward to implementing these programs. Next week, I'll be in Chapel Hill at the UNC School of Government, attending the advanced cloud of registers of details only. The only other thing I'll mention is that we have some marriage licenses we got back this week that are nearly a hundred and fifty years old, we've had them completely preserved, and there are pictures on my Facebook page, if anyone wants to see those. With that, I'll be quiet there.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
You move on to item C, the sales tax referendum information. Mr. Hooker.
Mr. Chairman, this is to follow up on a decision that the board made previously in placing a quarter of a cent sales tax on referendum for March third primary ballot for the citizens of Stokes County to consider. What I'm trying to do is promote this in a manner, Mr. Chairman, that the citizens are educated in what it's for and what it can do for the county. But I'm not promoting it in a manner that it could, of course, you, in what you will be voting for. It is to let you know what it can do for the county. What I have done so far, Mr. Chairman, is laid out some points that you have in your agenda, stating what this quarter of a cent can be for as sales tax. It can be for the use of educational. It may help in these areas to maintain the safety of our students through police enforcement or the safety of our buildings. It helps keep property tax low. It helps keeps these guys from raising your property tax. A quarter of a cent sales tax is three times more revenue than one penny tax rate. And with that, one penny tax rate raises a revenue of three, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars for the sales tax as a possibility of making one point two million on the upper side of that. With that said, it also, Mr. Chairman and board members, it also enables everyone to pay this. This is not something that is placed on the backs of the property owner and their homes and their land. It is for everyone, and everyone pitches in, and everyone helps with this tax, and it lessens the burden on the property tax owner. So, with that said, I've also contacted our municipalities. We've called myself, Shannon, Mr. Taylor, and we've contacted our municipalities and asked them to, if they would be in favor of pushing this sales tax for Stokes County. And I have also tried to get to our civic groups and any organization that would love for my And I have also tried to get to our civic groups and any organization that would love for myself or Shannon or, or Will or any of us to show up that would talk and go over any of this sales tax that we would be more than happy to attend. But also, I want the board to know that with these ideas of promoting this in a manner that it better serves Stokes County, then if you have some ideas, please let me know about it, because now's the time for us to be ready and get ready and making sure that we've got this information out to all of our citizens in Stokes County. And it's putting in the newspaper and in creating brochures and other information that educates our people in a manner of what it's for. And, and let them make the decision, the voter, make the decision of whether or not they want this sales tax for Stokes County or not. But any way that you can get in touch with me and let me know that you've got other ideas that you'd like to have, I really appreciate it, and we can start putting some things together. I do want you to know that, that in this, that the county can spend county funds to educate the public for what this, what this is and what this referendum is for. It is similar to the obligation of you having a bond placed on when they voted, and for you to be educated and know what that bond is for, no matter what it's for. This is definitely the same sense to where you are educated in the sales tax. So, Mr. Chairman and board members and public, I just want you to know that, that I'm seeking advice and ideas on how to make sure that everybody knows what this is all about. So when it comes time on March 3rd to vote for this sales tax, they have got a good understanding of what it's all about.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Any comments? Mr. Oakley, the only information I'd like to add it on there is that there are current counties on both sides of us. And I know Forsyth County's about to join this. They are already sitting at this rate, at a higher rate than we already are. Rockingham County, sir, Forsyth, yeah?
Forsyth is also going to have this on their ballot this year also. Suri County has it. Rockingham County already has it.
All right. Thank you, sir. Well, now move on to our discussion agenda. Item A, the Second Amendment resolution. Mr. County owner, try to speak as loud as I can so each and every one of you can hear me. Is this what y'all are here for? Stokes County, whereas is acknowledged that the right of individual citizens to keep and bear arms is under attack in the United States of America by elected officials from the United States of government. And whereas it is further recognized that the Constitution of the United States of America is the supreme law of the land, and the Second Amendment to the Constitution guarantees individual citizens to have the right to keep and bear arms in a manner that should not be infringed. And whereas the Supreme Court of the United States has through multiple rulings upheld an individual citizen's right to keep and bear arms when federal, state, and local laws have sought out to restrict this right. And whereas the right to bear arms is necessary for self-defense, the defense of others, including family members, the protection of individual liberty, and for the preservation of our American republic. And whereas many Americans believe the Second Amendment rights are God-given rights, and it is a law of nature that every creature can defend their lives from threats. And whereas the Stokes County Board of Commissioners wishes to express its support in protecting the Second Amendment rights of all Stokes County citizens who are legally authorized to own, possess a firearm. And whereas the Stokes County Board of Commissioners wishes to express opposition to any law, regulation, or to any, or, or other act that would infringe on the Second Amendment rights of Stokes County citizens. And whereas the Stokes County Board of Commissioners expresses its intent for Stokes County to stand as a constitutional right protection county for the Second Amendment rights by opposing any efforts by any entity to restrict these rights, opposition will include any means available in the U.S. Constitution and the laws of North Carolina, including the withholding of funds, direction of county employees, and legal action of other means as deemed necessary and legal. Now, therefore, it would be resolved that the Stokes County Board of Commissioners declares Stokes County a Second Amendment constitutional right protection county, and declares that Stokes County government will respect and defend the Second Amendment rights of Stokes County citizens. The Stokes County Board of Commissioners implores the North Carolina Legislature and the United States Congress to preserve, uphold, and protect the rights of all citizens to keep and bear arms under the United States Constitution, and further implores the North Carolina Legislature and the United States Congress to reject any provision, law, or regulation that may infringe, had the tendency to infringe, or place any additional burdens on the right of law-abiding citizens to bear arms. The Stokes County government will not authorize or perpetrate government funds, resources, employees, agencies, contractors, buildings, detention centers, or offices for the purpose of enforcing or assisting the enforcement of any acts, laws, orders, mandates, rules, or regulations that infringe on the right of the people to keep and bear arms and set forth in the Second Amendment to the United States Constitution. The Stokes County government will utilize all legal means necessary to protect the Second Amendment right of Stokes County citizens, including, but not limited to, legal action adopted to the 13th of January 2020 by the Stokes County Board of Commissioners. And as finishing that up, I do want to say something. We have a couple of citizens in here, in here with us tonight, including our sheriff, Mr. Angus and Joe Elvis, who helped put this together. And it's, it's a county thing. It's a team thing. We're all in this together. So when the government starts coming in to try to take your rights, you stand together. And once again, I want to thank every one of y'all for being here tonight. With it, I'll move on to any questions or comments from the Commissioners. Commissioner Minenhough.
I just want to say one more time, thank you for everyone that showed up tonight. I am a strong, strong supporter of the Second Amendment, and I'm a strong supporter of the Constitution. And when I took that oath in 2016 as a Commissioner, I meant every word of what was in that oath. And thank you for coming up and speaking tonight on behalf of it. That meant so much, and you expressed how you felt very well. And I just want to say thank you to everyone here tonight. And we, Mr. Chairman, after each Commissioner gets his chance to express his comments tonight, I'd like to make a suggestion that we move it back.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Yance?
Yeah, I'll make this very brief. As I said at the beginning in my opening comments, I took an oath to withhold the Constitution, and tonight, again, I look forward to reaffirming that. I think it's very important for everyone in the room to understand Sheriff Marshall, Mr. Elvis, Ms. Cox, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Tim, Mr. Hansley, all of your voices have been heard tonight. You guys, your voices need to be heard come November. That, that's when your voice needs to be heard. If you, tonight, we're going to reaffirm this, the five of us. But in November, your voices need to be heard. You need to make sure, as a group, you're a lot stronger than you think you are. You're a lot stronger than the five of us, and remember that going forward, and get out and, and, and show this same support in November. So I would encourage you all to do that. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Oakley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hope you can still hear me. Can you still hear back there at the back? Are you getting?
Getting thumbs up there.
Getting thumbs up? Good. I'm trying.
They know if you can see it or not.
Thank you, sir. I wish things were different so that we didn't have to even take the action that we're having to look at taking tonight. I wish we still lived in a country where our freedoms and our rights and our privileges were intact and not being challenged and unnecessarily or even illegally changed. But the fact is, these are different times. They're far different from the times I grew up in. And we have to do what it takes to get our message across. I remember something happening with, with a particular board, not this board. It was a particular board I was aware of some years ago. And they passed an action that was detrimental to the good, for the good of the people. And I asked, I asked one of the members of that board why they passed that particular action. And I got an interesting answer. They said, "Well, we did something similar before, and nobody spoke up. So we just thought we'd do what we just did." Because nobody spoke up. Well, tonight, you folks, by being here, and hopefully this board, by the action, will be taken, is a way of speaking up. Our elected officials, our Raleigh officials, Washington officials, God help them. They'll, they'll get a message that these people, Stokes County people, are paying attention. We're not like sheep being led to the slaughter. We're paying attention to what's going on in this country. And we're taking action to let our views and preferences be known regarding our rights and privileges that are important to us. So I'll just say one more time, I appreciate you being here. I have to admit, I was a little surprised that the number, very good showing. Amos, if you did this, you did a good job. But it's, it's important to be involved, and by you folks being here tonight, you're being involved. And you've sent a good message. I appreciate the message I've received from you. I appreciate the comments the speakers made. Very well done, all of you. You did a good job expressing yourself and really very clearly and eloquently reinforcing the need to stand up for our rights. I'll stop there, Mr. Chairman, but Commissioner Morris, have your time.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Morris.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Again, thank everybody for coming out, and, and I would echo Commissioner Walker's thoughts about how good a job the speakers did tonight. It was, it was really well done. And it was pleasing to the ear, sitting up here listening to you guys. I'll just tell you, I'm in violent agreement with what everybody said tonight that came up and talked to us. I had some thoughts today when I was reading through the, this resolution that we're going to adopt. And I'd like to just read, you know, read those thoughts to you, and they're short. Number one, criminals don't obey gun control laws. Number two, guns don't kill people. People kill people. Number three, Mr. Bloomberg is a disaster on gun control. And I got to tell you, I'll just be honest with you, scares the daylights out of me that he's going to spend a billion dollars on this election, even if he doesn't get the nomination. Because he is nothing but bad news, and, and what this, this stuff that's going up in the People's Republic of Northern Virginia is, is, is really serious business. And I'm, I'm really glad it triggered us, us to start thinking about this and do something about it. Because it's, we have to try to combat him and his money and the things he's trying to do at every opportunity, and of course, during the election that's coming up, as somebody mentioned earlier. Number four, and somebody said this earlier, a gentleman running for Congress, if the Second Amendment ever goes, the First Amendment will go right behind it. You can bet on that. And then probably thousands or millions of people will die will be the next thing that happens. That's what history has shown us in the past when governments confiscated people's weapons. And last of all, a kind of a separate thought, it's a pet peeve of mine, and I got the right audience here to talk to about tonight on this, but it just irks me when people call a semi-automatic rifle an assault weapon. It is not an assault weapon. Assault weapons have a little switch on them that allows you to turn it to fully automatic. If it doesn't have that switch, it's not an assault rifle. And I would, I would, and it really irks me even more when Republicans are on TV, on Fox News and everywhere, making that same mistake. So I would just encourage you, every opportunity you get when somebody says that, please correct them. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
At this time, I'd like to ask the board to move this to action agenda tonight. Do I have any voters on that?
No, but, Mr. Chairman, may I make a suggestion? Since we have such a large audience, I'm not sure how many of them will be willing to stay. However, I'd like to make a suggestion of moving this to action as item A, and moving every other thing on action down one slot, and making this the first item that we entertain on action tonight. The Commissioners would be in agreement with that. Commissioner Yance?
Well, proceed with your question.
Yes, sir.
I wished I knew the answer to this. But I guess it's just need to ask and see if someone can answer for us. What is between us being able to take action on this item now? Since we're going to act on it any way it appears, how much of the... Is that within a range of possibilities?
This time then, County Attorney, we're allowed to vote on this now and kind of jump to the action agenda and then jump back to discussion?
Mr. Chairman, while he's, while he's researching that, I would support doing that as well. Even though I made it really clear that football is not as important as the Second Amendment. We maybe went to these schools who really do need to go home and check out.
If y'all would mind, give us just a few minutes. We're going to contact our county attorney to see if we can legally do this. Commissioners, while we're waiting for this, we're going to ask Mr. Brim, since we have such a large agenda tonight, so we can keep the meeting rolling, and maybe he'll have an answer by the time Mr. Brim gets to us. We continue. At this time, last, Richard Brim, pleased to come up on our Tax Administration Month Report.
Good evening. I'm going to be brief for the sake of time. I'm going to give you the condensed version. You've got everything you've learned up to date in the past. I'm sure you've looked over a bit of it. I'll go for a brief, but if you've got any questions, we're going to let that actually begin. As always, the first item is our monthly tax collection status report. Give you two pages there. First page shows the December, we're at 72.2%. Next page will show that for the first month, first week of January, we're at 92.8%. We've collected almost $21.1 million of the $21.6 million that we've collected. So we're on pace to meet that. Next item you'll find in your packet is the business and individual personal property discovery for the Lincoln tax garnishment quarterly report. Everything's looking good there. We're on, we've basically the same amount of discoveries and garners that we've done in the past. Revenues look good, and the collection percentage is good on that also. The next item I have is the EMS billing and collection report. That indicates that we've billed over 2,000 transports for this year, collected. We've billed almost $1.3 million, and have collected $675,000. Big number there, $413,000. That's a contractual obligation that we will not be able to collect, that we have to try and settle right off. Next item is our interstate collection report, NC debt set off. It shows that over the last quarter, we've collected $21,604 on the Lincoln accounts. And then the next four pages you'll find there are your leases and refunds, less than or than $100. Then moving right along to the personal property. Cost index appreciation report table for business personal property. And we've got the individual guidelines for the individual personal property. And then lastly, we have the approval of the scheduled buying for the Sisney Labola homes. The next item I have is that we've established a date for Board of N.R. I'm suggesting April 6th. Just keep, if that, if that date does not work for the Board, we can definitely move that. Just keep it down. The first meeting can occur before the first meeting in April and has to occur before the first meeting, and of course, Monday or Monday. has to occur before the first meeting, and of course Monday or May. Next item I've got is the release of taxes for county-owned personal property. The next item I've got is the adoption of the Lincoln payment arrangement policy, hoping to get implemented to be fair and consistent and transparent with the taxpayers. And then the final item I have is the request for a penalty portion of the business personal property, which I'm all fancy to quickly release. The owner, Mr. Regan, has paid the original levy. He's just asking for the board to release the penalty portion, and the board can do that by statute. And Mr. Regan was not aware of his obligation to do so. He's fully aware of what he needs to do going forward, and he wants to, he wants me to let the board know that won't happen again. He would appreciate the board considering releasing the penalty portion of the discovery. That's all I have, unless there are any other questions.
Any questions, accommodations, please.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Morris. Richard, you mentioned something about a write-off. What was that amount again, please?
Four hundred thirteen thousand, four hundred thirteen thousand, three hundred ten dollars.
And you said it was something we really didn't have any choice, other than to go ahead and just write it off?
It's contractual obligation that insurance companies set forward, and it's the Medicare and Medicaid, were at mercy of having to write it off. So it makes our percentage, collection percentage, look really bad. It realistically never collected any.
Right. It was never within a range of possibilities to collect it in some way, sounds like a...
Correct. So if you take that, you know, four hundred thirteen off one point three million, then you would be down to a little less than nine hundred thousand. We've collected almost seven hundred thousand, that makes that percentage look a lot better.
A lot. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Morris? Richard, on the, these payment agreements that policy that you had in there, do you personally approve each one of those?
Yes, it would be myself, or Cheryl Hill, the Assistant Tax Collector.
Okay. So one of you two are the only two that can approve on that?
Yes, that's the way it would work.
Okay. Also, and then you'll tailor each one to the individual situation, as long as it meets your other term of the policy, right?
Correct.
Okay. Good, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. And Richard, you need to seven things, to bear a careful footnote, consent agenda for the twenty-seventh?
That's correct.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions, accommodations, Mr. Brim?
Thank you, sir. All right, in a little time, we have found out that we can move to action on this one item, and then we'll jump back to discussion. So after we take our vote, I'll take a short recess, about ten minutes, so if anybody else would like to get up and leave at that time, since they for the rest of the meeting, they can do so. All right, for action, item A.
The Second Amendment's resolution, do I have a motion?
Motion, yeah. We approve of a resolution concerning the Second Amendment, as stated, as you read.
Have a motion, a second. Any more comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Hoes? I vote aye.
Real quick, this won't be able to consent agenda the next meeting, like I said before, if there's anybody who did not get to speak, not who wishes to speak, please show up at the next Commissioners' Meeting, and we'll be at the Commissioners' Chamber as normal, twenty-seventh, at six o'clock. Thank y'all, and we're recess.
Thank you.
He would basically want to be in the top of the bottom of them if you judge my ideas. And he's, he has certain limits, you know, he's 40 years, if you're a 40, for terms that would be eight years. But you don't need to be there.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I guess it's not a single down picture or anything, but uh.
I'd say that I have very many.
Thank you for your.
Do what you have to do.
Thank you for three more. These are what they'll do for ten day years.
Uh, no, he's old, he's forty-six. No, but he went, he's in the CDC. He's, Dave's okay. Yeah, I live across from. Yeah, right, yeah. Stay with the Constitution, Ron. Mrs. Jakes, do it. Sit.
He probably knows what he wants to be.
Very good, sir. Keep up the good work.
You going around all this?
When we finish.
Thank you.
Call them back over. Back to the discussion agenda, moving to item C, the Stokes County Community Child Protection and Child uh, fatality prevention report. Stacy Adams and Kevin Moore.
Good evening, um, we're here about the report within your packet for two thousand nineteen child protection, child fatality. Um, the report's very simple, um, we've been forced in the last two years not to have had to review any child fatalities, so we're back over that. We meet quarterly, um, and what we need from you is that next meeting, I will refer you to approve the folks on, in the packet for our committee.
Any questions? Any questions or comments?
Now, so the list and service, it looks like the committee come on board and it is. I was wondering if someone else expressed an interest in being part of the child, uh, protection and fatality. Could there be other people added in addition to what the list, that list is, if someone was interested? And I don't know, I'm not asking because I know of anyone in particular, I'm asking just as matter of what the process is. So someone else could be nominated if, if there was reason to do so. Prue, good, second.
Thank you, sir. I look in the, uh, four nominations.
Well, I'll go ahead and nominate folks on the list that we present, and at least will be that for a while. Actually, let's really all of you to care to make a motion that the nomination should be closed.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that the nominations be closed.
Motion second.
Second.
In discussion. On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is closed. And we'll move this to action agenda from January twenty-seventh. Moving on to item D, the shared corporate full-time SRO request.
As you have before you, the sheriff's office in conjunction with the, uh, school board applied for a grant last fall. Received word in the December, it has been approved, uh, it's a hundred thousand dollar grant, fifty thousand matching. With that, uh, figure, we were able to, uh, employ three full-time SROs using the grant money. Instead of the county monies we currently are on the, uh, budget that y'all passed last July. That'll help out, uh, mitigating the monies that y'all, uh, not all of them are part of that monies. Will be saved and gone back to the county with this, uh, with this grant, we can put in, uh, three to four time SROs. Uh, and we are requesting it, uh, to go ahead and move it to action because it's a time-sensitive, uh, item. And so we can go ahead and implement using grant money instead of the county money.
Any more, Sheriff Moore?
Uh, it's just like Jeff said, if we can go ahead and, and, uh, move it to action, where we can start utilizing that money. Because every year if you utilize that money, we're, we, uh, not using the county funds that's been put out there by the commission. I think it will help us, like, uh, we're just working our parts of it then. And, uh, I think some time sensitive, of course, we can use the better of it.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner Moore.
Sheriff, yeah, I, I rely heavily on your input and your recommendations when it comes to things like school security. And, uh, you're, you're much more on the front line and much more tuned in and up to date on what the needs are and how best, best meet these needs. So if you're, if you're saying, and I think you are collectively, the two of you, that this is a step in the right direction, this will bring us further along toward where we need to be. I put a lot of value in that, is that what I'm hearing you say?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Trump. Any more questions, comments? All right, for the sheriff's request, he'd like to pass it to action tonight. Is the board see a, uh, issue with this, is everyone okay with it?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So you add, add this item H. Thank you, Sheriff. With that, we'll move on to item E, the county buildings, new restructuring request.
Mr. Chairman.
That's, uh, something that, uh, that several of us have been looking at over the past several months and, and, uh, restructuring and, uh, utilizing, uh, space that, uh, that would better free, uh, and allow our, some of our apartments to have better space to work in. Over the past several months, several department heads along with Julia and, and all those that were involved in these buildings, along with Mike Marshall and myself, have reviewed some of the vacant buildings that we have, along with the new maintenance building that is budgeted for, in this budget to be built. And, uh, we, uh, would like for these buildings, uh, would like to present this to the commissioner with consideration, allowing us to move forward and utilizing these structures now. And by doing this, it will free up funds hopefully in the, uh, uh, purchase of maintenance building that is, uh, approved to be built. That we are currently have engineering already going to approve for, for, uh, bids on whether or not they're interested in, in providing this service forward, right? And I have, uh, Fire Marshal Scott here, Aaron, and, uh, and Brandon here, and Glenn here, and Shannon, and myself, and Julia, all of us is here to answer any questions you may have on some of this. But anyway, the first, first one is Light Bright House, hospice house on top of the, of the hospital. We would love to utilize this space as a EMS station for Danbury. Uh, I have here, uh, paperwork that has been in acceptance from the Light Bright folks at the hospital, saying the day okay with this. This will be an area that we can allow the EMS to move out of the hospital, move into it, start utilizing that and have, have the space that, uh, they, they would love to have. And, 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 uh, be able to function as an EMS department. Uh, if you have any questions, concerns on what, what it would take to get that, and you would, uh, you would look at some of the, uh, estimates here that, uh, Brandon, our EMS director gave us on, on outfitting and doing some of the, uh, work that would allow them to be an active EMS station here in Danbury, you can see that, that they want, uh, some grading work for, uh, park, or, or carport. Then they would need to buy the carport. The hospital is talking about maybe letting us utilizing their carport, I don't know Brandon if that would be okay or not, or if it would not be suitable for these large amelaxes we've got. So you can answer that question for, if, if so, anytime. And some, a few refrigerators and recliners and so on, and, and make it, uh, where these, uh, uh, it's like the other, uh, EMS stations in the county. And then it would have to have certain wiring for, uh, other amelix to be charged, and River Street would have to run, and then repairs on some fixtures and lighting. And carpeting and some rubble that, uh, you're looking at twenty thousand dollars to convert this. Roughly now to be able to utilize this house as an EMS, uh, station, and, uh, and, and let the EMS move out of the hospital and, uh, and have their own station there. So Brandon, if I left anything out, you know, you could, on this, but if, if everything's okay, then that's one of the structures that, uh, we've gotten here, that was number one. And two is the old county garage at three oh four, and in each package, you can see I put down the estimated cost of things and, and a map full of locations for, uh, for you guys to look at. And this county garage is where, where the filling station is currently, and, uh, this county garage has got the, all the equipment of EMS and, uh, and Fire Marshal and others in, in it. We would like to take this structure and turn it into a, a storage area that we've talked about several, uh, several times in the, in the past. And, uh, there's a lot of things that we brought in, kind of, kind of fell through as far as the storage and maybe some of the planning and zoning through Danbury and other areas. But here's a chance for us to utilize this old garage, we'll go in and we will petition off load areas for each department so they can have their own little areas. So it won't be getting, uh, tangled up with other departments, you know, and, and, and that way they would have a, uh, closed gate door to where, you know, if it was, uh, sensitive materials that it could be, uh, under lock and key. This is estimated to be, uh, to do this, this is estimated to be right at about five thousand dollars to convert this, this old area, and that's just the, the stall areas for all the paper, for all the retention plan that we have for our documents here in the county, and each department, and each department that has those, uh, documents. Now, if, at any time, if the board has got questions, I will stop, I'll shut up and let you ask your questions on anything that you would have, if you can just, or either I will continue on.
Is currently any questions?
Yeah, I did on each one of them, but I can wait to the end.
Okay.
Uh, number three, you can also see the newly purchased, uh, old property, uh, this is the county, this is the garage that, that, uh, Mountain Road and Highway eighty-nine and eight. We just purchased it for, uh, at, at, at a cost of, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I do want you to realize that a lot of that came back to the county as it paid the taxes. And, uh, uh, but, so in that way, it would, it wound up being a, a, uh, purchase for the county that can be well utilized and, and it was just a good buy. But with this, we would love to turn this into where it is storing all of our equipment. It's large enough to put all of the stuff that you see at Alden Square, uh, here on top of the hill or other locations, stuff that you got in the old garage. Everything can be placed there that's, that emergency services has, and it can, you be utilized as a storage area now until the commissioners decide what they're going to do with this building. Plus, we've already got amelix number six, a little more amelix six, that big amelix sitting out in work and, uh, out by open. And also, we've done, I've done directed, uh, Brandon that, or if he need to, it right, uh, arise in the county that it be, uh, in service, by all means do so. And I'm thinking that's what he's doing now with that. But anyway, uh, this, this would be, uh, if you see it in. Let me get that, you've got a, you should have a, uh, a letter from, uh, Mr. Gentry on forty would take to convert this site into a, a Bible, uh, storage area for the county until they decide what they want to do. You got slight upgrades in the lighting that needs to be done, and, uh, you need some flood lighting outside, you need some, uh, thirty amp, uh, electrical work done. You need some little bit of grading around, it's a gravel put down, and then want some painting and some bathroom repairs. And naturally, uh, you want to make sure that all the doors and everything is secure to where we can lock our equipment up. You're looking at a total of twelve thousand dollars we can spend here and start utilizing this building as soon as possible. And then, uh, Mr. Chairman, board members, you have the, the current fueling station that we've talked about, we took it, we took it out of our budget previously. And we've talked about bringing it up, uh, in the future, but Glenda was doing her little magic in Stokes County and coming up with a way that, uh, it, it, that Stokes County can benefit the use of fleet cards. Now, this all come about because we was having problems with our diesel fuel and our amelaxes, and when we house diesel fuel here in a small manner and we don't run through the volume that stores and other locations do, then we have a problem with bacteria that damages the engines, and that is a very expensive fix. So with that, we've got those fleet cards for those, uh, EMS, and they've been running them, and now Glenda's, uh, worked it out to where they'll give us the same deal as if we bought the, like we buying the gas and, and fuel now. So that's like the exempt status that Stokes County has as an exempt organization receiving all of its, uh, sales tax money back and gasoline costing about what now, uh, per gallon?
We haven't got the statements since we started the new program because we just started it. But my understanding from the gentleman that came and spoke, it will be estimated just like we're paying now, like the dollar ninety range. They give us a rebate, it's just a different program, the one we first started with Brandon and his crew was, um, one that we basically got rebates and things to that nature. But I had a gentleman come to me and let me know that we could actually do some exemption forms and things, so Julia and I worked on those. And we actually started a whole new account with, it's called a WEX program, which is through the state, um, a lot of this around the counties use them. I learned about it from a conference where a lady was sent aside me when Brandon called and we had to do something quickly. So she gave me some information and we started there. I'll be able to have some data probably in the next couple of months to actually show some numbers to show the savings and everything to that nature.
But anyway, it seems to be working very well with the EMS and, and.
Power main that's as deep as tremendous.
Your maintenance assets? So hopefully in the long run, it's probably going to be a, a good save. So hopefully in the long run, it's probably going to be a good savings for the county to utilize these cards instead of housing something that is here on site. And we know now that what we do have is aging, and at some point in time, we're going to have to do something about that. So I would always be in favor of utilizing some other people spilling tanks on their property instead of ours, so.
With the chairman's permission, I'd like to ask her manager a question.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Jake, Brandon, if I understand it correctly, that we would not be using our own fueling stations anymore? These vehicles that need fuel would just go to a service station and use the card? So I see an assortment, must be forty or so different service stations that the cars could be used at? And that seems like it'd be very convenient.
Yes, that's, that's the, Brandon and Scott, both of them, both have been using the cards. Actually, a lot of our local facilities, for example, Hillside, the Berry Patch, which is up in Los Angeles area, which is where one of our ambulance city is, and it is difficult to find diesel. They all participate in the program. So, and basically, you have to use your card just like you use your fuel card here in Danbury. You have to put in your mileage, it, you know, keeps a record. It actually is a lot more efficient from the data side of it. It'll tell me, I can go live on the online system, I can tell if Scott got fuel and where he got it at, what time he got it, how many miles was on his truck when he got it. Then, you know, I can, I can track it if it becomes, if there's something suspected. It can automatically, I can shut that card off if the card's lost or something to that nature. And the sheriff's department, a lot of times with the jail, they have trouble. Right now, we have VP and Exxon cards. It is very difficult in the areas that they're going, they have to figure out what's where. These cards are a little more widespread. It's basically, Scott uses an app, he was showing us, it actually tells you what service station is the closest, which one has the cheapest, things to that nature. So it's very user friendly, and it gives us a wide, more of a wide range.
Also, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask, since the sheriff has probably as many vehicles on the road as any department in the county, what his thoughts are about this, if you would share them, please?
I think it's a good idea, in my opinion, because that is going for, you can get fuel in Los Angeles, you can get fuel here in Danbury, plus Monaco, and King, in all our major areas, you can actually fuel up. And the good part of this, we're not having to maintain tanks wherever potential problems we've got to clean it up and we've actually fixed the tanks we've got, which I think there's three right now.
There's three locations of tanks, and answering your question there, Commissioner Walker.
This will, we will still operate our tanks until this board and the county department heads decide what is the best for us to do, either shut down or maintain or relocate. But I would hope that the board would consider utilizing these cards to where we could just get rid, get rid of our tanks on the large volume size. It may be some areas that you may want to maintain some certain fuel, but that's be left to, left to be seen and let the board have time to decide how they want to pursue moving forward with our fueling.
It sounds like we have four of our main players on board, Sheriff, Sheriff Barman, he's given, it seems to be, a thumbs up, EMS, Fire Marshal, and Glenda seems comfortable with it. So I'm getting a good positive message about at least looking seriously in this direction.
Well, just, you know, if someone's out working or wanting to call or working in a certain area, they ain't going to worry about running back to Danbury to fill up because they're getting low. And if we've got an ambulance stationed in Tencol and it's run call out Winston, and they can say, well, we're going to run to Danbury to fill it up, or King, just fill up on the way up Winston because you may need to come to Monaco to pick somebody up. So it's, it's very positive with the county and can be something very good for taxpayers.
How about cost?
Cost is-
Fuel cost?
Fuel cost is pretty much the same as you're doing now. You'll be saving a lot in maintenance.
Maintenance for the existing fuel tanks. I'm hoping to have, like I said, the next two to three months, which will be close to budget time, that's my plan to have some data so, you know, we can kind of see what our savings are. We have had to spend some money on fuel tanks. Necessarily the upkeep, things break because it's an order system, it's hard to get the parts for, things to that nature.
What about the providers? Are they comfortable with these cars being used to their stations, their stores?
Yes, we haven't had any complaints. Basically, to the, to the service stations and things to that nature, it's just like using a credit card or debit card in their, in their point of view. It's just the savings we will receive as a county from the program we will be on.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Well, just, this is the same kind of program we ran with our company all the way up to about a month ago, since we're kind of flip flopping. We're going to a tank at our own company, but we use so much fuel a day, we'll probably keep that tank running pretty good without any problems. So it's kind of the opposite with them, they're not using enough to do anything, they should get stuck down in the tank causing problems. But we used the fleet cars for a long time until right now it made a world of difference as far as keeping up the paperwork, everything on trails, I remember our office people loved it, so.
Sounds good.
Yes, sir, Commissioner.
I think one thing that's important that we're missing too is cost comparison, if it's, if it's equitable to what we're already paying. Our liability with these tanks that are outdated, and if you have to replace one now, you're going to have to come up to current codes, probably double all. Mr. Manahal, Ms. Cox, do you guys remember how much we spent on the cleanup at the bus garage?
I don't know exactly.
Several hundred thousands of dollars for a spill at the bus garage. So you reduce, or you actually eliminate that liability, hopefully, so certainly one thing that we need to look at. Insurance rate, I'm not sure what our insurance rate is on those, I'm sure it's not too.
Good.
It's a lot different avenues to pay. That's true.
I'll go ahead and ask a question on this one, since you guys have started. Are other counties using the system?
Yes.
Does it work out good for them?
Yes, the, like I said, I was in a conference when Brandon called that day, the girl beside me, she is actually at the Hickory area, and she uses them, it is on a state contract, so a lot of the local use that just because you don't have to bid it out. I think Sarah uses a different company, but it's the same type, state type system.
State of North Carolina uses the same program.
Yeah, the WEX program.
So you're going to keep running both systems until you test this a little bit? Is that what you're saying?
And that's the plan because, you know, right now we do supply fuel in those systems. The only one that I think we may consider keeping may be the diesel system at the landfill. We have not had any problems with the algae or anything in that nature, but I wanted to kind of get with Mark, see his feel on that. But they use a whole lot of diesel, but the ambulances do not get it there, it is only used by the garbage trucks. So that one may be something we may go both ways on, or just kind of see what our most cost effective would be from the garbage, you know, from the landfill standpoint.
Okay, the only other suggestion I would have is once you decide you don't need the tanks, we need to get them out of the ground because they're old, I think all of them are old.
They are.
Get them out before they start leaking, so.
Yeah, I thought we would, Scott, we mentioned talking to the folks, kind of get estimations on what we need to do there and kind of have a plan together. Hopefully, by budget discussions, we would have some good data to be able to kind of, I'll make a decision on which route to go.
Okay, and this gives you all the info you need for auditors and all those kinds of-
Yes, actually, it's more detailed than what we currently have. Now they just bring a receipt once in a while, those receipts get lost, this actually gives you every information. I can get it down to the, I can get it more detailed, I can get it less detailed, however we want it is how they'll tailor it to our needs.
Okay. They have strong protections in it too, I would say?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Well, Mr. Chairman, you see with the discussion, what we have in here, I think it's just a win-win for taxpayers and for the employees and for the commissioners here to move forward with the request that we have in utilizing these structures here that are empty in a manner that will allow us to utilize the gas savings of the gas cards and the little cost and the maintenance cost it was on. I do want you to know on this gas thing that we do have gas at a tank at the Green Box site in Wallico, and that's coming up in this agenda. We're moving forward to ease some of the pressure that's up, that's applied there to do with people on weekends and stuff to, at the collection site, that gas tanks have got to go today, so with that new construction there. So we're going to have to utilize something in the area there if we didn't have these cars or something. Anyway, with that said, you can see here that where if we utilize these buildings for storage of our, of our equipment that we have, that we can get them out of the rain and the weather, and utilize some of the other ones to allow us to take advantage of the retention plan on all of our documentation, and then the parking area that we have behind the old jail, that we're able to do a significant savings, whether it comes from the budget or either we are borrowing the funds, it is still a savings in here that we can cut back on this, on this maintenance building, that I think would be very significant and more than pay and be more worthwhile than anything we're spending now to kind of upgrade these structures in a manner that they can move into. So with that said, Mr. Chairman and commissioners, I am requesting that number one, two, three, four, and five, in this agenda, numbers, be placed on the action agenda for January the twenty-seventh, and we move forward with utilizing these structures and utilizing the new cards that Glenda may get started as soon as possible. One more question on the fourth property, is it being quickly cleaned up?
Scott told, the fifteenth.
The fifteenth is his last day. It looks pretty good. I was talking to Mark Delhaute today, and a lot of, pretty much everything inside the building is gone, there's a few little things outside that need to be cleaned up. The oil situation is kind of, they should come in Friday and oversee the removal of barrels of oil from changing oils in vehicles. But all of that is pretty much underway. We will meet, personally meet with Mr. Delhaute, Glenda, or anyone else that would like to go down and inspect the structure. If something is not cleaned off or moved out of the way, then we have, have a retention to where we retain ten thousand dollars of Mr. Fox's money from the actual purchase of this property to make sure that if it was any cost in moving any of this debris out, that there was money there to pay for it, the taxpayer wasn't paying for it, and if we need to hire someone to finish it up, then there's a little cash to do that also. But if it's cleaned off, then Mr. Fox gets his money back. So it's kind of a decision to get done.
Yes, sir.
The, first of all, my first question on these five items, well, probably two of them really, number one on the EMS thing, I would support doing that, I think that's a good move. My question is, the urgency, is this something that can wait to our regular budget process, or does it need to be done now? And if so, what money or where's the money coming from to do it?
This would be money that we would have to request that the commissioners take from, I guess, the fund balance.
Not fixing the quarterly review.
If she found extra funds throughout the budget, quarterly review, I guess we could move.
If I could find it, if I found it money?
Yeah, if we found it in. But-
My reason for the question is I like for things like this to compete with other budget requirements at the appropriate time, but I'm going to slow it down if there's urgency associated with it. But we do have to have ample money somewhere to fund it, it's going to be in current year dollars, not the next year, next year's budget, so. Before you- So is it urgent, I mean, given the amount of time it takes to do this stuff, I mean, is it going to get done before we even start the budget or after we finish the budget or what?
The hospital's still cleaning out the house now. They already started that ham or cleaned out the garbage since we moved there. Urgency, it don't have to be done right away, it's going to be when there's some tanking, we've got to clean the garbage real good. The main thing is just getting, paramedics have, they got three patient rooms, they got a couch, a recliner, a desktop computer, the microwave sitting on the desk, and a TV beside it, and it's just, they're in that one little room, two of them, sometimes three, when new people are riding. They have two patient rooms where they stay at night, you know, while they're not on calls. We're full staff right now, morale's really coming around. Maybe this will help them crews that all work at the hospital, they have more like a station like the other three stations we have in the county.
Yeah, I agree with you, it needs to be changed.
Yeah, it's not, I mean, it don't have to be done next month.
Well, I just like-
The house is kind of available.
It's easy, it's easy to fund it in the next budget because we'll be funding it along with everything else too. Otherwise, we've got to find money for it, so.
And then, and prices too, our estimates, I'm trying my best, if we do move forward to do better than that. The carport wouldn't save money, Pam said we could use, the gentleman I got asked from looked at that carport and said he didn't recommend moving it, just due to the structure of it. That is something we could get a second opinion on, and there is some money in my maintenance and build repairs. Sometimes we use it, sometimes, you know, we don't. There's about eight thousand left there, we could apply toward this, but if something does break in one of the other stations, that's where that money usually, we did make any repairs.
Okay, well, do you guys just give us recommendations about the next meeting on whether any of these things could be in the next budget? Because if it can't happen until after the next budget, then I don't see a point in money this year for it.
A lot, maybe a cash reserve.
Yeah, but, you know, so just give us a recommendation on that. The building thing on the Old County Garage, are you already working on that? I mean, that's only five thousand dollars, so.
No, no, there's nothing going on until the board gives approval, plus the board.
We have to get the current stuff out of it, which would be housed at the, the new fault garage, we're calling it. That stuff has to go out before we can do anything in the other one. And that was just kind of an estimation from Mark, my understanding from him, our maintenance guys would do all the shelving units and everything to that nature, he would just basically be the supplies that they would need to do that.
Okay, and then how much is the fault property, what's the bill, twelve thousand?
That's, that's like twelve or thirteen.
Yes, something like that.
Really got the same question on all, and just tell us if it can wait till the regular budget or if it needs to be done before.
Okay.
Well, the fault property, we're going to have gravel. We've got to put the trailers in there where everything's been cleaned up, dug out, just to back the mobile command trailer in, it's going to go to the foreside of the building, backing in, all this has got to have quite a bit of gravel.
Okay.
The lights inside, they come on, some work, some don't, or the electric, the ones in there are very, not energy efficient.
Yeah.
And, you know, we don't have to do all that on the list, but the gravel, we fix some of the lights, and exit lights, I think my fire company had to be putting in, there's none there now.
Okay.
The bathroom, stuff like that, we can wait on that.
We can fit that into the budget.
And I was thinking about, you know, this most likely to be something we can move forward with now as soon when possible, Commissioner, always, due to the fact that a lot of equipment is sitting out in the weather and nature is taking its toll on it.
Yeah, I'm fine with it, if you're ready to go, as long as you find the money to do it with. They all need to be done, and the one doesn't cost anything, right? Moving the building behind the jail, that doesn't cost anything, that's just a decision. Obviously, we need to make that decision now if they-
And, and you know, and maybe move forward with the gas cars.
Yeah, oh, and the gas car, I'm good with that.
Sounds good.
Okay, that's all now.
With the, some of the trailers, the fire association has, we house them inside a building, they will pay up to, we pre-very slowly for utilities.
We were over at the, with the new ambulance shelter, it's a prison camp, the fire association used to store their equipment there, and that building was stored out, and obviously we hadn't moved that. They were paying three thousand dollars a year to have equipment in that building for the maintenance and pile of bill and all that for that location. So with this building being large enough as it is, we'll be able to incorporate the fire association equipment in there, and there's money collecting to assist with storage costs.
Yeah, just one last quick question, will using the building downtown get us out of the prison camp, store- Will using the building downtown get us out of the prison camp storing records there? Let's, I guess, get rid of all that up there?
Yes, yes. And it will, and it will make the, the building on that hill, the maintenance building, where we were trying, going to try to incorporate a whole section in that building, that will basically cut down the size of that to be able, if we use what we currently already have, just add shelving.
Yeah, I'm good, then, so I'll have Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Any more questions, please? Commissioner Wal.
I need Julia's help in that, she's a quiz with her financial needs and numbers. Julia, we have, have budgeted five hundred thousand for a new maintenance building. And it appears that we'll be saving two hundred thousand.
It's all to be financed.
So it's all to be financed, so there's no way we could take that? I wish we could. Is there, is there any way to, to do some of this work, be, having it happen and, and come out of next year's budget? I don't know that there is. What, what kind, that's even a confusing question, isn't it? Is there any way to go ahead and be doing some of this work that it appears the Board is very interested in seeing happen and having it come out of next year's budget without waiting to do the work?
You have to have it budgeted to be able to do the work, budget fiscal trollack. You have to have it budgeted to be able to do the work.
Would be nice if we could go ahead and do it and say, we'll pay you later.
No, that...
It doesn't work that way.
Budget fiscal trollack will allow that.
Never, never hears that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Questions coming in? Work here with this on action next meeting?
One, one question about action for our next meeting. What action are we likely to be taking since there's a question about waiting, are we going to go ahead and say, let's do it and take it out of this year's budget, or the budget management? Or...
I believe they're going to come back with some answers next meeting and we don't come back.
Discuss more of the funding, where all these items will be paid for and how it's going to be paid for. And at that time, then the Board can approve or not approve.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, we'll move on to IMF, JCPC expansion funds allocations. Ms. Shannon?
So this is for the Stokes County Juvenile Program, which we, so they received some expansion funds for fiscal year nineteen twenty to address the race to age program needs in Stokes County. The amount they received was twenty-one thousand eighty-seven dollars. They sent out a request for proposals, people could bid on that and try to get portions of that money for their programs. And at the September eighteenth, twenty nineteen meeting, they heard proposals and on November nineteenth voted, voted at the December seventeenth meeting. They are recommending as follows, and you've got that in front of you, as far as the, how they're going to allocate the money to the Stokes Friends of Youth Anger Management, seven thousand seven hundred fifty-nine dollars, the Stokes Friends of Youth Mediation and Conflict Resolution, two thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars, and the Insight Hanging Rock Circle, sixteen thousand nine hundred and seventy, for a total of twenty-one thousand eighty-seven dollars. They want to note that the expansion funds don't require any county match like the other JCPC funds do. So the, all they really need is just the Board's approval of how they've allocated the money and their, the allocations for this year for this, for this program.
Thank you, ma'am.
And that can be voted on at the, at the next meeting, but it just has to be in front of you.
Any questions or comments?
Have a comment, please.
Yes, sir.
Maybe another Commissioner likes to go ahead with questions or comments, which would be fine to do.
Yeah, you can call.
I attend the JCPC meetings, Commissioner's representative on it, and one ongoing concern that I have, and it's coming, it's surfacing with these particular numbers, is this is not enough to do all that needs to be done. It's almost like, and Shannon might, could have, our sister county manager, or county clerk, might help with this, she attends meetings also, but it's almost like the state sort of changed these agencies by coming up with these amounts. And it may be something that we want to consider in our, in our upcoming budget, that we might want to kind of step up to the plate a little bit, because we all want to do as much as possible with the opioid crisis. And these are some of our frontline agencies. These are dealing with some of our most vulnerable citizens, particularly our... So it might be something, even though this, this is a pretty easy decision, this is no county funds involved, go ahead and approve this amount, the needs are greater than this amount, so we might want to keep that in mind.
Thank you, sir. Any more questions or comments? So we'll move us on to the action agenda next meeting. Point seven. Moving on to IMG, Walnut Cove Green Box site, purchase agreements. Mr. Oakley.
Mr. Chairman, this is, finally got to a point that we've been talking about now for some time, and some of, some of the issues concerned in making sure that we made this site much, much safer for their citizens to protect their trash. And what I have done so far, Board members, is worked with the architect and engineer and Mr. Delhaute as far as overseeing our collection sites. And we have went to the folks that own the land that are allowing us to purchase the property to make the necessary dream come true, hopefully, with our Green Box site. And you're seeing a map on your last page on how the design and layout of this would be. I have a purchase agreement from Keith E. and wife Jeanine C. Hipner that will be purchasing, will be purchasing, this purchase agreement will allow us to purchase the point seven seven acres of land that is back behind the, the site. Shannon and I went and paid the visit to Ms. Ball Maston on Friday night, one afternoon, because she wasn't able to meet with us and get it in time to get here. So we met with her Friday night and got the purchase agreement signed by her to allowing us to look and utilize her property. And with this, if everything works out right, then we will pursue purchasing this property and, and making our Green Box site into a reality of how it is budgeted this, this year that it's budgeted. So with that said, I am requesting the Board to allow us to move forward and find an out with our architect and surveyors and with the maintenance and Green Box sites to move forward with the studies and, and grabbing and collecting the data that's necessary to make sure that this would work well. And that this piece of property that we, the properties that we're buying is much needed to make sure that this is brought to a reality and, and move forward with making this a collection site that is more efficient and cost savings and safer for our public.
Any questions or comments here?
Just to make sure I understand the total amount. You get twenty thousand on the one plot, purchase of two point two.
That is correct.
And the other one was nine thousand, is that correct?
That's correct.
So the total will be twenty-nine thousand.
And yes, the fault property, the forty thousand, we was going to give a piece of building that was beside it that fell through. And with this, we can just push this stuff further back off the road. And, and this is, again, these, these values based on the tax value that we have in the tax office that we are assessing people on. So I don't see it's necessary for us to go have anything appraised if we're already assessing folks on this type of bank.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Any more questions? Mr. Wal.
I have a question for county manager, please. Dick, this has been, this is something we've been hoping to do for a long time.
Yes, sir.
And eliminate a very dangerous situation on that particular road, particularly at certain times. Is this close to the bullseye for us, what we could do during that location? Because usually, if we do something right to start with, do it the best we can, we're better off in the long run. So can you say that this is the best design and most functional and safest that we can come up with, within reason, with the resources we have to work with?
Well, Mr. Delhaute, that's over the Green Box site, seems to, to love the design work. Perry Peterson, he, he's one of the ladies that said this would work on the property that we are trying to purchase, but we would have to have it to make it work, and this would be the best design that he can put out there, and it would be the most safe for, for our citizens, it'd be a little more flow of traffic, and take a little bit of ease, pressure off it.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Morse?
I hope I don't seem too ragged here. And Board, with this right here, I think we've been, we've been kicking this around for a while. I'd kind of like to see this, it ain't nothing new to the public, we've been discussing it. I'd kind of like to see it move on the Board, I'd like to see it move to action, I think the Board's okay with that.
Again, you know, this just allows the engineer and Mark and myself and anyone that's involved to do the data collection and the survey, and then make sure that this, that this, that's laid out on paper is actually, can be done on this piece of property, and if it, and if it can, then we go to these individuals and say, okay, we're ready to buy. And where they have signed this agreement, they're saying that they will say if that happens.
Mr. Chairman, were you asking for it to be moved to action, cannot?
Yes, sir. I just want to see what the Board's feeling is on that.
So we could either, if I may...
Yes, sir.
We could either do that or, I think, our manager suggested there's some more information he needs to have in hand, that...
We can't do anything until it's approved. Once you guys approve the purchase agreements for us to move forward, then we can start calling in surveyors and the engineers to really give us some of the actual numbers of what the cost would be in, in building these, and having a layout. Once the surveyors come in, they will survey all the downed lines, and they will do the topographical work that would be necessary to say, can, can, you know, can we do this feasibly without a lot of cost and great work and so on? And then, and then we would build, would design and lay out a safe, safe site for everyone. And hopefully, get to where we're utilizing trash collectors that, that utilizes the new trucks and things. But that's something that comes, that's coming down in the future.
So, so you're saying you've gone as far as you can go without Board approval for the purchase?
Once you get the purchase agreement for us to move forward, if you all approve that, then we can move forward. If not, we, we, we're just sitting here waiting for you guys to, to say move forward.
Well, we have discussed this many different times, in different clubs. I think Commissioner Walker and his home, some of the boards that have talked about this, as it's been discussed and brought up by some of our current members, especially Commissioner Yance brought it up, about being there on a Saturday morning, and the traffic jams, and the possibility of accidents occurring, that we've been very fortunate that we haven't had something bad happen in that place. If you're out there on a Saturday morning around ten o'clock, it's a mess, isn't it, Commissioner Yance?
Oh, okay.
And it really is. I don't know how the other Commissioners feel, but as, as the Chairman said, it's been kicked around, can has been kicked many times down the road. First round, ready to go ahead and move the taxes tonight.
I'm okay with moving it to action, simply because if I recall, the property owners were a little bit, there was some recency at one point, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that would be my concern, is they would move along and, and try to be proficient as possible, and try to get that finalized sooner rather than later. Because if not, I don't see it working at that different side at all. It was going to take the additional effort to make this work. So I'm okay with it. Commissioner Wal?
I can go with it. I like to keep to a minimum the number of items we change in a meeting, we've already changed one decision, but I think that was, or two, for good reasons. I can say, I think Commissioner Yance brought up a good point, that we don't want somebody getting told fees at this point and having to go back to the drawing board again, so I'll go along with it.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Morse?
I'm okay with it.
So we're moving to action, action agenda, make it item high. Thank you, Mr. Oakley. Now item H, Stokes County Order Fee Schedule.
Board, as you see right here, the board, the V's are pushing this right here, on the back.
It's a mandate in term of being approved in our, for members that attend certain boards. So I don't know, you know, you talked one time about increasing some of these fees for the folks, so we wanted to make, we wanted to give you what was going on frankly, and let you, let you make a decision, hey, you want to change that? If you want to increase, they want to decrease, I don't know.
And with the Stokes, with the Board of Hales and the DSS Board, when they were still active before they were abolished in twenty thirteen, they were on this meeting schedule list as well, for that same, same amount, thirty dollars per meeting.
Thirty dollars. And there were just some concerns with this Board about increasing something, the, the paid for, Board members that done certain committees and certain boards that handled a lot of, a lot of things in the county.
Commissioner Morse, you're recommending that forty dollars?
I recommend forty dollars. The, I, I think these rates have been the same for a long time. We get forty dollars for our outside meetings. The people that do these boards, like DSS, Health Planning, really all of them, you know, they, they don't only incur travel expenses, but they put a significant amount of time in preparation and getting ready for these meetings. And, and I would, you know, I would much, I really think it's a time we ought at least, you know, recognize the work they're doing for us and as we empower them to do more. And I think this, this Board's going to empower these boards more, probably than they have been in the past. And so they're going to be putting a lot of effort in it, and, and I think it'd be a good fight to effort, at least in forty dollars what we get for outside meetings. One other suggestion I would have, and I don't know how you feel about this, but some of these boards have big fees every time in the, what I've observed with that is you never know who's coming, how, whether they ate before they got there. And every one of those, when it's over, there seems to be about three quarters of food or half that is still sitting there, getting somehow disposed of later on. So I'm not a real proponent of, of feeding people to come to meetings, I'd rather pay them ten more dollars and let them eat however they want to eat. But that's one of the trade-offs we could make from a cost perspective. Plus, we end up having our employees cooking meals and doing food handling and stuff that's not necessarily in their bailiwick to do. So, and especially, I'm definitely going to include DSS and the Health Board in this whenever we get them reset, to also get that increased amount.
Any questions coming in?
Obviously, I would certainly support that. I know some of the, why they in things of that nature, there's a premium for travel, they actually reimburse you if you turn it in. The first meeting I went to, they gave me a form, and I didn't really know what to do with it, so. That being said, I think adding ten dollars to it would certainly cover some of that. Just finding, these are from July of ninety-one and April of ninety-four, they've been at these rates. I would certainly support it.
And just kind of along with what you mentioned, you stated for that... Yeah, just kind of along with what Commissioner Yance stated, if they paid for YVAD board members either. I know commissioners who attend meetings get paid, but all the others who are on that board. Two of the, two of the boards pay mileage, I believe, three don't. How do you, how do you see leveling played field there, Commissioner Morse, if there was any reasonable need to?
I don't think I would personally make any real adjustment for the mileage. I would just let that run its own course separately. Still pay forty dollars for each meeting. So I'm really interested in paying people for the effort they're putting into the meetings. But, you know, and you look, try to get mileage into it, then some of them drive ten miles, others drive fifty. And it can get a little bit too complex to try to orchestrate unless we, they just want to write an algorithm or something for it.
Or do what YVAD, what Commissioner Yance was describing with YVAD, you just put down your mileage. I I I agree with the spirit or the tone of what we're discussing. I think our boards need good members, people who will be there when they need to be and put the effort into it that they need to. And even forty dollars is not all that much when you consider what's involved with some of these boards.
Agrees with you if I give it moved right into action on the twenty seven?
Are you changing anything at all on the different rates for election day and for voter election day? They don't count the same. Just the per meeting rate change into request to change to forty whereas the election day?
I just say change it to forty. They get a hundred on the election day.
So leave that, leave that election day rate the same? Okay.
That's my opinion.
Okay.
Mine too, yeah.
Okay.
All right, with that, we will now item I, close session policy and procedures. Papal here is pretty much the same thing that was established back in 2014. Does everybody have a chance to read over and do they have anything and take away? Commissioner Morse, Commissioner Walker?
What now, in close session?
Yes.
Yeah, my philosophy on close session is to be super transparent on it and release the minutes quarterly. Along with all the other things that are in the in the material that was handed out here. But to, um, I mean, these minutes are almost more important than regular minutes and have more interest to a lot of people than regular minutes. So I definitely think they should be treated as the other minutes and posted on the website and released quarterly. And I think the third thing is the commissioners ought to approve what is released and what's done. It had some in, I think in the policy it said sometimes the county manager does it or whatever. But I think we would want to review those minutes after the attorneys redacted them and and look at what should or should not be released. I think it's important for transparency for people to be able to get an idea of what we're doing in close session because they they often have questions.
Carolyn, I don't think, uh, Chief Corbin, you don't do it to tie our.
Tie it up. He looks up the, uh, close session minutes and he redacts whatever needs to be taken out.
And and there was some question about if there was a policy because nobody could quite remember or come up with it. But there actually was one in 2014 that we found that's there. So that's what's on here at the end of these from what was presented last time. So the main thing is we don't really have to take any action on it as far as the policy if we don't want to change anything. Unless there's something you want to amend, then we could amend that and have it, you know, put an amended date in there and approve that. But if there's nothing requested to change, we just leave it the same and get those in front of you for approval.
So, uh, with that, Mr. Morse?
I believe that that policy was generated back then whenever somebody requested that we start releasing them and that's when we started releasing them quarterly. And if it, you know, if it includes releasing, I don't think it includes posting them on the website though, does it?
It doesn't. That's not been done and, um, yeah, there's, there's nothing on the website. The only thing on the website is, is if in an open meeting you go into closed session and whatever is discussed is acted on in that meeting. That's in the regular minutes as an item approved, you know, out of closed session came out and approved these items. That's the only thing on the actual website. There's nothing else on there. This policy's not on the website either, so that would probably need to be something changed.
I like to see them on the website personally. I mean, if you release them and they're not on the website, I'm not sure where people go to look at them. So.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, to me, one of seven minutes is important as another set. So we could have the policy do that. I think that would be more transparent.
Is that something that the board wants to change in the policy as far as having them posted to the posted to the website?
I'm fine with that. Um, I agree with making it more transparent.
No, as long as our attorney takes care of redacting the things that need to be taken care of.
And are we speaking of putting this on action to approve that next time as far as the, um, adding that line in there? And then release them on the website moving forward from this date or, I mean, are we going to go back backwards?
I just post them starting from this date.
I don't like when you talk that. And I, I think it's very important that the attorney handles redacting. You know, there are certain items, we all know that there are certain items enclosed that cannot be.
Right. So we'll put it on act, is it on action for next time and change that line to say, post it on the website from the date of approval forward?
And release it quarterly. If it's not in there, I can't remember.
I think that is in there.
I believe it is, yes.
It is.
Everybody agree with it?
Mm-hmm.
All right, we're on the IMJ, appointments to Stokes County Nursing Home Committee Advisory Committee and Stokes Adult Care Home Committee Advisory Committee.
Yes, sir.
So this is a, um, a request from, I've got two of these actually. Um, some have some vacancies. There have been a few people that resigned from one of the committees. But for the Stokes Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, I got a request from them to reappoint the following individuals, which is Siki Grab, Sylvia Grogan, Nora Langford, Mary Lawson, and Myra Morgan. And they will have one vacancy on that committee if they reappoint those individuals. And then on the Stokes County Care Home Community Advisory Committee, the request was to reappoint Gregory Harrison, Diane Joyce, and Jewel May. And that leaves four vacancies. They recently had four people to resign from that committee. So those will come before you as they receive applications or I receive applications for those. So we just need approval on these members for now at the next meeting.
I'll open the floor for nominations regarding the listed members to be approved.
I'd like to ask a question.
Yes, sir.
Like I said before, the nominations, um, that you're saying it says slays four vacancies that had been before have resigned. Was there any common theme of the purpose of the resignation?
I've got their resignations. Most of them were, one was a health reason, one was a spouse with a health reason. It was mostly things like that. There wasn't anything.
Yeah, yeah.
They just couldn't quite do the commitment anymore.
Question please.
Yes, sir.
Are these documents being advertised?
They will be after tonight. I'll just, just have to let you know about them and then I'll put them on the website.
Very good. Any more questions? I'll open the floor for nominations.
Make the action out here. So, um, I see the, uh, the, um, four on for the Stokes Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee and the Adult Care Home Community. As we say, we still have vacancies.
Remove the nominations, be closed.
Motion on second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll move on to our action agenda now. Item B, propane vehicles. Have this one to true if we have any questions about it.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is just what we previously talked about before, you know, uh, uh, eight vehicles we have in the Sheriff's Department over to running propane so that you grab a, uh, a significant amount of data to show whether or not we would like to withhold this amount with a lot of the sheriff's colors. But, uh, Ms. Pruitt is requesting that we approve a bid process because this is a significant amount of money. It puts us over the threshold of making it sure as we put the exact people people to bid on. So this is what we're requesting now that we allow them to go out and request bids for RFPs on doing this type of work.
And there's the changes that were requested at the last meeting are highlighted in yellow on the revised RFP at the end. We just made it a little more clear that we were, kind of what we were wanting to submit out, especially the turnkey job, we want one price. And basically the training of the operator and the user of the garage staff if if it is necessary.
Just one question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Only what's Shannon, the color, Linda, the color is different on this one question or statement I questioned last time. Are y'all taking that out where it says all costs must be shown, no additional cost will be accepted or paid for by a county or state?
No, that that should be, it should, unless you want that statement removed.
Well, that, it's the same question I had last time. If it's a firm fixed price contract, that puts all the risk on the contractor. If it's a, if it's a cost contract where, you know, we're doing cost plus a fee or something, then the risk is shared between the two. And I like the risk all on the contract.
On the contract, right.
Say, when you put something in there about cost, I'm not sure what you're trying to do.
I think that the cost of, the way I was looking at it was, you know, a lot of them just give you one fee. And then some of them, when you get proposals back, they break it down into, for example, Monday we've used whole propane in the past. But my understanding from them, they use different people or a different vendor to actually fit the the thing. So I can do it either way if you like it. If you don't want to see it broken down, we can just take that out and they just give us set price.
Well, the main thing I just wanted to understand is they're giving you a firm fixed price to do all the work, all the risk is on their side. There there's no cost sharing arrangement based on what cost they list or anything else. So.
Right. We can just take that one line out.
I don't really think it adds anything. I mean, if they, if they want to give you a firm fixed price, all you're doing is comparing comparing the fixed prices. So and you're going to pick one based on that. So you're, you know, you've got the lowest, you're going to pick the lowest one. And it really doesn't matter what their cost are. They're the lowest term fixed price. So I think it may be clearer to them or otherwise you may get a question on it.
Okay.
Okay. More questions? Do I have a motion?
Second. What, 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 what is your motion, Commissioner Morse, that we do put it out for bids?
Approve the RFP with the deletion of that one line.
Sorry, I didn't hear about it.
With the deletion of the line or?
Yeah, with the deletion of that one line.
Green line?
Yes.
Yeah, they're gray.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close.
Who was the second for that?
Moving on to item C, Stokes County Health Department, very good, right on. Do you have a motion on this?
I can, uh, make a motion that we approve our director's request. Do you have permission to run that again?
Second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Just to, just to note, the amount's two thousand two hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighty-nine cents for that debt write-off.
Item D, the DHF system upgrade request. We have some questions on this one?
I do, I do have a couple of comments, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Morse?
I reread this, this proposal from the tendered day or yesterday and, um, and developed some concerns. I, I, then I called Dale today and talked to him about it and I think he's satisfied my concerns. But I wanted to tell you guys what they were and go on the record for what, uh, information he gave me back. So if you'll turn on your, in your copy in there to the page, um, it says two dash seven, it's right near the end, it's toward the end. Is section two point six, it shows two point six down at the bottom. Okay, the questions I posed to him and I got answers back on them. First of all, it's, uh, what I decided when I started reading these last parts of this proposal was that, um, that the contractor was really going to maybe sell us something and not assure us that it would work once we bought it. First, in two, section two point five, oh, one point three, it starts out by saying DHF is also prone to interference from other outside radio sources. So my question to Dale was, are we, are we expecting to have interference with this new system? And, uh, and then the answer back when he talked to the, to the vendors on it was basically, since it uses the same frequencies and the same tones and everything, there's no reason to believe we'll have interference. But that at least, that triggered my thought or concern about it when I read it. So I think I'm okay with his response back on that. On the system backhaul, uh, toward the end of that paragraph, it says, "The proposed design includes no changes to this equipment and assumes sufficient capacity to support the proposed radio equipment." Well, when I saw that word assumes, I'm wondering why, does it or doesn't it have the, uh, the capability to support the equipment? And the answer back on that was that we're using the same microwave links and so there's no reason to expect any problems. Again, using the same frequency and the same time and also the same sites for this equipment. The new equipment is being installed at the same sites that the old equipment was at. So I'm okay with that. Then I started reading about subscribers, two point seven. And the last one, last sentence in that says, "Any programming configuration changes required in the existing pagers or portable radios will be the responsibility of Stokes County." Well, my question then was, is this new equipment going to require us to reprogram our radios at our cost? And our equipment at our cost? And the answer, uh, I got back on that from Dale was that, that no, this, uh, we'll be using the same subscribers that we're using on the current system. And these changes should not cause any, directly cause any kind of program or configuring changes to our existing equipment that, uh, that would cost us, that we would have to pay for if, if, if that happens. So, uh, then the last one, uh, it starts out there, "Critical unknown undefined design parameters at each site which inhibits Motorola's ability to develop RF coverage guarantee." So my question to Dale was, will they not guarantee us this is going to work when we pay two hundred seventy-seven thousand for it? And then, um, and then as you go further in that paragraph, it talks about, "We cannot provide a guarantee," toward the end of the paragraph, "We cannot provide a guarantee of system coverage and no coverage acceptance testing will be done." Well, no, that was a real red flag to me as well. So, you know, they're not even going to test it to see what the coverage is after we pay all this money for it? Well, the answer back that is also satisfactory on that is that, and I remembered it once he told me, is that when we did this in 2012, we did a, uh, coverage acceptance test where we were able to cover ninety-five percent of the county. The areas that we couldn't do were things like buildings under. The areas that we couldn't do were things like buildings underground and a couple places by the terrain. So there's, so there's really no need to do a cost or another coverage acceptance test, the one that we had before should still be valid, and, and so I think I'm satisfied with that answer as well. But whenever I read that, you know, it was, it kind of, all these things I just read to you made me a little nervous that we could pay 277 and then this thing halfway worked compared to what the old one did, so I think I'm satisfied based on what he was told back by the vendor that, uh, even though the wording's like it is in here, and we're on the record now with these answers on our minutes, that, that we don't expect any problems with this system, any, and it should work pretty much like the old one, given it's on the same frequencies and same sites and so forth, so I just want to get, let the board know that, and get that on the record.
And Dale, the rep that you talked to, do you have these answers in the email?
I, I've come on the phone with Ruth, all we have a ten on the phone.
Okay.
But I agree with you, all this, uh, far as the interference, the FCC, now with all the frequencies that they have, parameters you have to follow, and we've had interference before in the past, and it came from, uh, other counties in Virginia, and if, like another county was to go outside of, whatever, it should affect it, but it's just close. And what I've done before, have contacted FCC, make sure they're in trouble.
Okay, can you get these, I'm sorry, can you get these questions and answers on the paper force? Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner, any help?
Well, you just, you just got an answer for one of my questions.
Oh, okay, sorry about that.
That's okay, I like raising my left hand, I'm like, it's good.
I thought you was giving a piece on it.
Now, I'm first saying that, uh, the questions Commissioner Morris brought up, I thought are very valid questions. Anytime you start using words of sun, uh, sun's a very tough word, and inhibits, and would guarantee coming in there, I, all of those I thought were very valid questions. I was gonna ask if we could get that, not just on the verbal confirmation, but a written confirmation, I want it in writing, because if, if I'm not wrong Dale, was the price not 297,000?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I said, I, I just want to make sure, 290, we're gonna spend 297,000, correct? And I just want to make sure we're gonna spend 297,000, that we have something more than just a verbal, I, I want to say, I want something in writing also, which Commissioner Nickerson, he edged me out on that one, but you understand my concern also.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Morris's questions, all were very valid questions, but I'd like to see it in writing, 200, that's almost 300,000, that's a lot of money.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Walker? Kind of a refresher type question for Dale, if I may please.
Yes, sir.
I see you right there. You've, you've been doing what you're doing for a pretty good while, and have, have experience with this type situation. You seem comfortable in a direction we're looking at. I, I would like to think that you've done your research and homework and that you're on pretty solid ground far as this recommendation.
Yes.
Is that a valid?
Yes, that's right.
Observation?
Yes, sir.
So, you, you don't really have any strong concerns of any kind of just for, if you're, you're feeling very comfortable with what we're looking at right here?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that, that means, I, I value folks' opinions who are on the front line and are actually using equipment and have the kind of experience that you have. Thank you.
Any more questions, comments?
Only other concerns, I didn't see Dale, or I let him explain all that. Didn't see him till it was too late.
All right, with that, do I have a motion? Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Moving on to item E, Architectural Engineering Services for Public Works Making Systems. Motion to agree, Peter, she's more than. Much of the same.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I still think we should put him on our staff.
Do you want to add that in the motion? All right, the Board of Health has put a request. I'm up. I'll open the floor for any nominations.
It's an odd mix of quotes as far as engineer and optimal testing and that and there, and it may be the best we can do for now, so I'll go ahead and nominate this people presented. Oh, one, one, let's go ahead and see for a second, now I have some discussion. Oh, no, we would need a nomination, I'm sorry.
I'll make my own calls.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, please.
Go ahead, sir.
If, if someone, let's say, pick engineer for example, were to say, you know, uh, I, I think I would like to serve on that board, and, and they could fill that engineer's position, what would happen?
We, yeah, we talked about that last time, like with the payment, if somebody filled in.
I remember some discussion about it, something like, they would replace the person on there, and if that did happen, what would happen to the person replaced?
They could leave to general public.
If there was a place for, all right.
Motion is second. All in favor, in closing the nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Now, poll the boards, Dr. Commissioner Morris?
Uh, the list that's listed there.
Commissioner Walker?
Same.
Commissioner Morris?
List is presented.
Can I help?
Same.
Move on to IMG, Department of Social Services Board, for the request. Uh, we have three applicants that have been received at the board. We only appoint one of these three. So open the floor for any nominations.
I nominate Greg Collins.
I nominate, uh, Katie.
Katie Teter, okay. Any more nominations? Motion to close nominations?
Motion, close nominations.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have discussion. I think Greg is clearly the most qualified person, he grew up in Stokes County, he knows the county from one end to the other, he has been the EM and the EMS director for Stokes County, he has mental health training, uh, along with his medical training, he's a registered nurse, he understands how the county operates, he, uh, understands how the county budget process operates, uh, he is a person of strong character and integrity, and I think you guys will all agree with that, that, you know, and he can be trusted, and he can definitely be trusted to handle sensitive issues, and has as high a level of demonstrated performance as any individual I've ever worked with, and I've worked with him very closely, so, um, I think he is the exact kind of person with the empowerment this board's gonna have that needs to be on this board. Like, I'm not, you know, up to leaving it to happenstance and he gets put on later somehow or whatever, I think it's our responsibility to put the most qualified person on it.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Walker?
I agree with pretty much all that Commissioner Morris said, I, I've served with Greg over the years in various capacities as well, he was our EMS director, uh, very quality person, no doubt about it, and, and I'm looking at it this way, uh, Commissioner Morris said he didn't want to roll the dice, so to speak, on, uh, Greg maybe being put on later, uh, I, I guess I'm kind of looking at it this way, and I, I don't pretend to have a crystal ball, but I see two candidates that I know, I've, in some capacity been involved with both of them in positive ways, and I would hope that whichever one gets on the board at this time, there could very well be a place for another one, because here's why. The, uh, Social Services Board, after a person is selected at this meeting, will still have an opening. There will be four people on the Social Services, on the DSS Board, we still need a fifth person. So whichever person between, I say just for conversation's sake, between Greg and Katie, whichever one is not selected this evening, there could very well still be a spot for them on the board, Greg. Commissioner Yaski, if you have anything to add?
So that was, that was gonna be my question, I thought that we were looking for two.
It was two, but the statute read, the commissioners appoint one, and then when the board's formed with that four, they will then appoint the last one.
I thought the commissioner appointed two, but we'd already appointed one right here.
Well, I mean, we appoint a commissioner.
A commissioner. And one appointment has to be a commissioner.
Yeah, and that's, that's been done, so that left us one more.
Right.
Two more.
But two, that's not, and we left us one more.
Right.
Right.
But again, my question was, is we extended it out because I thought we only had two, and we were looking for two, so we.
Well, there was some, there was somebody else who's come forward, put the application in, the, um, Ms. Jackie Fraser. And we had extended it to read over what she had submitted to us, see how qualified she was for the position.
But to answer Commissioner Yaski's question, he's not thinking wrong, in the beginning it was said that would be appointed, and then Stacy and I spoke and throughout some, when we were doing all this, we kind of miscommunicated that a little bit, and it really is only the commissioners appoint two, it can be a commissioner or somebody, but we owe you a way to a commissioner, and then one other individual, and then that five-member board, which is gonna be the, um, DSS Board, the four members appointed, there's just two appointed by the state, two appointed by this board, and then one that board appoints, so there was a little bit of a mistake in the beginning of that, that was, I think, explained maybe in meeting that you might have missed, I'm not sure, so you're thinking the right thing, it just, it seems a little more confusing now, but you, you are correct, it was, it was presented that way in the beginning, but now we're left with three applicants and one, one more appointment for this board to make.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, out of the three, I think the two of them are highly qualified, so I don't have a lot to say about them.
I have one additional comment, I think Greg's qualifications are way beyond the other ones, and that's why I would like for us to put him on the board so he can be involved in selecting that final position. That's all I have to say.
So I got a motion to second on that, do you want to close nominations? Who's second, Dale?
The, the close?
Yes, to close nominations.
Um, I thought that Ronnie made a motion to, um, close, and that, I mean, and then Commissioner Yaski seconded it, and then it went into discussion, now you gotta poll the board, and you have two, two nominated.
All right, motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, now, now poll the board, just, Commissioner Morris?
Collins.
Teter.
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 Teter. Moving on to item B, Sheriff's Department full-time SRO request. Do you have a motion on this?
Are we asking, uh, should, are you asking, uh, the motion should contain that we provide $50,000 matching grant, is that what we're asking? Yes, I make that motion that we provide the $50,000 matching grant, and I would like to look and julia, make sure we.
There was budget amendment and consent to do that.
I saw that.
So now I will have to do a budget amendment, take it from part-time and put it into full-time, but that, I'll have that next meeting.
You're good.
I already have a note.
So I'm, since, but it was time sensitive, I think it's towards jail, yes.
They can go ahead and hire.
Therefore, I make a motion, I'll make a motion, like, by $50,000 to match, a hundred thousand dollars.
And that'll hire three?
You can hire three, three, full-time, that's all, I make that motion.
Okay.
Motion, do I have a second?
I'll say.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Last item on here, item I, lot of code, green box site, purchase agreements, do you have a motion? Motion to agree the purchase agreement.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. I have a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Craig, make your adjourn.